Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Today is Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the zoning board of adjustment for the city of Asbury Park. Mr. Avaloni, can you please call us to order?
Yes, of course. If you could bring up the statement.
Yes, sir. Just one second. Sorry. I am out of practice, as you can tell.
Welcome back.
It's been a while. And you know what? While I'm doing that, I'm gonna just take a roll, if you don't mind. Okay, Daniel Harris?
Yes, here.
Brittany Ashman?
Here.
Tim Slick?
Here.
Joe Potter?
Here.
Wendy Glassman?
Here.
Bonnie Nock?
Here.
Katherine Minarvini?
Here.
Russell Lewis?
Here.
And Christopher Avaloni?
Here.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
All right. The following meeting is being conducted by electronic means in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, amended for 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct meetings electronically during a state of emergency. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. In addition, a notice regarding this virtual meeting and instructions were published in the Asbury Park Press and the City of Asbury Park website. A copy of that notice is on file with the Board Secretary as well. The notices on the conduct of this meeting are in accordance with the guidelines for virtual meetings issued by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs. And so, since there appears to be no housekeeping issues, we had originally two applications on, but the second application, 1302 Madison, was asked to be withdrawn without prejudice by the applicant himself. So we will not be hearing that application anymore, or at least for now. So we just have the one, 306th Avenue, Mr. Karris. It's your show.
I'm sorry. Mr. Avaloni and Jack, I don't know if you want to submit that letter from...
I'm just gonna move the request by Mr. Brightman, the applicant's attorney, dated February 17th, 2021, which should be on your screen, into evidence as Exhibit B1 for 1302 Madison. And also, it would be dismissed without prejudice, but we would need, I'd like a motion for that, that the board acknowledges the request and hereby grants them a dismissal without prejudice.
I will make a motion to that effect.
I will second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Christopher Avaloni and a second by Russell Lewis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? All right, motion granted to withdraw application without prejudice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Irina. Thank you, Jack. All right, back to 306th Avenue. How about a quick recap for us again, Mr. Karris, and we can go from there.
Sure. Andrew Karris from the firm Fox Rothschild on behalf of the applicant, 306 Ave. LLC. Just to remind the board, we are here for a continuation of the hearing on this matter relative to property at 306 Ave., Block 3606, Lot 5, which is located in the R2 zone. We have an undersized lot, 3,500 square feet. We're proposing a two-family residential dwelling on the site. Two-family residential dwellings are permitted uses. However, because of the undersized area of the lot, there is variance relief that is being requested in addition to a height variance. Lot area FAR or 2 among a number of variances that are being requested. We're going to continue tonight with testimony. We had submitted some revised plans from the architect, bringing down the height a little bit of the building. And I'm gonna have him testify first as to those revisions that I'm going to call our planner, Dave Roberts, to finish up his testimony with regard to the applicable standards. And I'm gonna finish up with brief testimony from my client as to the nature of the development that he is putting before the board.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. With that said, I would move to call our architect.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Karris. Please do.
Mr. Savarese?
Yes. I don't see you, Michael, but please raise your right hand. I see up there. Raise your right hand. You solemn swear that testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the applicant.
Michael Savarese, S-A-V-A-R-E-S-E. I'm the architect of Record. My offices are at 34 Sycamore Avenue, Little Silver, New Jersey, 07739.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Savarese, you're obviously familiar with this application, as you've testified a number of times with regard to the original plans and then the revisions as we've continued with the application, correct?
Correct.
I knew recently after the last hearing prepared some additional revisions to the plan. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, if we can get that up on the screen and have that marked.
I'm trying to get it. I don't know why I can't find it right this moment.
These had been submitted to the board quite a while ago.
Do you want to start with the renderings or the plan?
What's ever easiest for you.
All right, so let's go through the plan.
Okay, so I believe this is going to be A10 for identification.
Correct. I believe.
Irina, would that be correct?
I'm just looking it up right now.
Okay, thank you.
So...
Hold on one sec. Let's just get the proper marking on the...
Are you sure you're all right, Mr. Savarese?
Yes.
You sound so hoarse.
No, I'm fine.
Yes, A10. Sorry.
Okay, yeah, we left off with A9 being the planner's report. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Savarese, we're looking at what's been marked, what we're marking as A10 for identification. Do we have a date on these plans for the last revisions?
Yes, we do. 2221, meeting number seven.
Okay. All right, so A10 for identification is the plans, a set of plans, pages 1 through 6, that have been revised on February 2nd, 2021. Am I correct?
That's correct.
All right, let's go through the revisions on the plans.
So basically, the gist of the revisions is, as you can see where the bubbles are, this is... We've taken the stair tower and made it smaller, so everybody was, at the last meeting, everybody was concerned that the stair tower was still too high. So we took something, we took the ornament off and then made it actually an angular tower that, from the side block to 300 block, it is sloped to go with the stair. So right now, the only section of this tower that is eight feet is the section about 300, which is about 45 square feet. And then we also reduced the stair tower height down to 38 feet. So with that, I think we have a lesser dramatic building, if you will, and it's not, it's, again, it's, we're trying to keep the height down as fractally as possible.
And what is the height to the roof of the building?
To the roof of the building is 30 feet to the low parapet and 33 feet to the rail.
Okay. And then 38 to the top of that stair tower, am I correct?
That's correct.
And that stair tower, the entire purpose is basically for a stair tower to provide access up top, am I correct?
Access to that top upper deck on the roof, correct.
Okay. What other revisions were done to the plans?
Okay. We have a, we've actually made a rendering that shows, this was the original higher-height building with the decorative top and the square, and showing how we are pretty close to the buildings that are adjacent on Sixth and on the main street. I want to show you the other one. So that's the one with the sloped stair tower. So you're picking up, or getting rid of, the bulk that's on the west side of the tower.
Let's mark this. This is gonna be A11 for identification, is the rendering with the stair tower. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay, A11.
So I actually do think this helps in getting rid of some of the decorative decoration that's a little bit unnecessary, if you will. I think it's, actually, probably is a cleaner building. And as you can see from along Sixth Avenue, the facade, even though our garage is on the main, the opposite street, it's in keeping with the other facades that are further up the block. And I think it does fit in, and it fits the corner, and it's not overpowering as you turn the street.
Mr. Savarese, would you say that this rendering is in scale?
Yes, I would.
And in fact, why don't we go to page 6 of 6 of the plans, I believe that reflects the heights of the buildings next to it?
Hold on one second.
That's going to A10.
Did you bring down the height of the tower somewhat, Mr. Savarese?
We brought it down about a foot and a half.
Okay.
We made it as tight as possible inside that stairwell by, I believe, making it set off a clear. So we're trying to keep it as low as possible. And that angle on the tower itself, you know, matches the angle of the stair.
I understand.
But we went out and measured the adjacent buildings, and as you can see from the sheet, this building is 29 feet to the top of the ridge, is 28 and change to the top of the ridge, is 36 and change to the top of the ridge, and is 32 and change to the top of the ridge.
Okay, and why don't we just identify, when you make those measurements, which elevations we're looking at?
Okay. Well, this is on Sixth Avenue, and those are two adjacent buildings to the west.
And give those measurements again on the subsurface?
The one right to the west next to us is 368. The one further down is 320.
And that's your north elevation, correct?
Correct.
And looking at the east elevation, then?
That is 20, furthest away is 2910. Closest is 26, oh, sorry, 284. And you can see where our main roof line is, where at or below what's there.
Okay.
So you're also still proposing a common area on the roof as well?
Yes, the common area in the front, correct.
Okay.
That's where you want that stair tower to go out to.
Okay.
Do you want to see that again?
Sure.
So that, that's the area right there.
Okay.
Came out the door, and it's an L-shaped spot that gives you view of the water and view of the neighborhood. And it's confined just to the 20 by 20 section in the corner.
Okay.
All right, I have one other exhibit I'd like to show.
I'm sorry, while, while Mr. Savarese is doing that, is there someone on that is on a phone and a computer? Because we're getting feedback.
Unfortunately, I have to, we don't have that exhibit. Would you guys have, there's an exhibit we sent that shows the square footage, the lot coverage of the lots?
Let me check. What, when was that exhibit submitted?
He says it's the same sheet. Oh, here, I'm sorry. This is what I'm looking for. I threw it to a separate sheet.
You found it. Okay.
Forgive me. COVID is kicking in.
Which page is that?
This is A104.
Which would be page... That would be the last page, page 66. Okay.
So, when we went out in the field, we did an interesting, we found some interesting news that I think really justifies our case, if I can find it, huh? Where'd it go? Sorry, making everybody dizzy. So this is our lot. So we're, 306th Avenue, building height is 30 feet, maximized 38 feet for the tower. The building coverage we're asking for is 36.9. The building to the west of us is Block 36064, same building height, same. And their building coverage is 37.75. So they're actually more than us. The one due west of there is 36063. Their maximum is 32, and their maximum coverage is 42%. The apartment house that's two houses away or two lots away is actually a 42.8%. And what's interesting, the two-story residence that's right to the south of us, second away from us, is actually at a lot considerable of 60% percent of three houses that are on this lot. So we are one of the least amount of coverage in our block, which I think is very interesting to note and say that, the fact that we're not asking for anything that is over-exorbitant.
Have you made any other revisions to the plans?
I think we adjusted the first floor height, which you talked about at the last meeting, of that height inside the stair tower with seven feet also, to push that stair down. That's how we're getting it down to the 38 feet.
Okay. No other revisions?
That's it.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Savarese?
I do. This is Russell Lewis. Hi, Mr. Savarese.
Hi.
Wasn't there going to be some revision to the front door on the Sixth Avenue side? Weren't you gonna make that a functional door?
I believe we did. I...
We did?
Yeah.
We did? I'm sorry, did I, if I missed that, I apologize.
They agreed to that at the last meeting, Russell.
At the last meeting.
I didn't really consider it a revision, but we did.
Okay.
So both doors are operable, or is one a...
They're both operable.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any further questions for Mr. Savarese's changes? Board professionals, I guess, Jack, can you swear in both Donna and Jason?
Or Doug, yeah.
Or Doug.
My hands. Do you solemn swear that testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay. Donna, would you please state your name for the record and tell us your affiliation with the board?
Donna Miller, board planner.
Doug, would you do the same?
Doug Cullen, board engineer.
Thank you.
So Donna or Doug, do you have any questions for Mr. Savarese's changes to his design?
This is Donna. So I don't have any questions. I think at the last meeting, I was satisfied with him clarifying the operation of the door facing Sixth Avenue. And I think, you know, they've worked to try to satisfy as, to the extent possible they can, with the the design exceptions. I yield to, obviously, the board engineer about the the driveway configuration. I think I had preferred the previous orientation with the big island between the two pairs of garage door openings. And I don't know if that can still be accommodated, but again, I leave it to Doug as far as, you know, the physical constraints and maneuverability on the driveway cut. But I think, I think they've gone, you know, to some effort to try and rein in this design.
All right, thank you, Donna. Doug, do you have any questions or concerns to discuss with Mr. Savarese?
So, most of our concerns were addressed at the last hearing, mostly the biggest one being the stormwater management. I, Donna brings up a good point about the driveway. It would be nice if the sidewalk could continue through the driveway. It doesn't look like it's doing that there. It doesn't look like a standard construction driveway that you would typically see, you know, with the concrete aprons in the sidewalk. I don't know if that's possible.
Mike, is that possible today?
I think we could do that.
Not an issue with that.
We can run the sidewalk through.
It essentially is the design of most of, or if not all of the houses in the area where...
Not an issue.
All right, I appreciate that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, but besides that, that's, those were all of my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. All right, so I guess we'll have to, at this point, open it up to anyone in the public if they have any questions additionally for Mr. Savarese.
Thank you. And for the public, if you have a question, please click on the raise hand button or dial star nine if you're on a telephone. And I have two hands up at the moment. Warner, why don't you go first? Go ahead and ask your questions.
Before he asks the question, questions must be relevant and related to the testimony given this evening.
Thank you, Jack. Hi, everybody.
Please state your name for the record, please, Warner, and give us your...
I'm Gardner, Fifth Avenue, Asbury Park, appearing as the city librarian.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I'd like to refer back to the last page in the revised plan, page 6 of 6, that shows the elevations. Okay. Yeah. I think there's a little bit more there. There's something missing on the bottom. Scroll up a little bit more. Ah, there we go. Okay. So my question is, is it your testimony that you believe that the building you're proposing is in character with the four pre-existing buildings? Is that your testimony?
That's testimony for the planner.
No, that's relevant.
My testimony is that it fits the mass and character of the adjacent buildings.
What character would that be? Could you define what you're referring to as far as...
It's a residential building fitting in with other residential buildings, standing by itself in the same massing as the buildings upstairs. It's not overpowering anything that's there. It's not like putting a six-story tenement tower next to a one-family home.
Okay, so by character, you're referring to the use, not the appearance?
Well, yeah, does, I guess, use, but appearance, it's a fitting appearance to be fitting in with the buildings that are adjacent to it.
Okay. So you're testifying that you believe that this new building appears the same or similar to the pre-existing ones?
That's not what he said. His testimony is it doesn't appear the same. Said it fits within the character. Two different things.
That's a matter of debate. Okay. I have a question about what Donna testified to. She referred to design exceptions. What design exceptions are we referring to here?
That would be a question for the planner.
Well, Donna mentioned it during this part of the testimony, so I'm...
No, that's a question, it's not about what Donna said, it's about what this gentleman said. Design exceptions, variance, testimony. It's a good question, but you need to ask it of the planner.
Okay, but she was, she was asking this witness about that.
I, okay, what, and what was, Donna?
Hang on, hang on. This is, this is Donna. So I didn't actually ask a question. I made a statement that I felt that the design had improved overall.
Well, the word you specifically...
They actually resolved the exceptions. Some things are still clearly needed, design exceptions, as pointed out in our review letter from, trying to find the actual date. Is that January 14th?
Review of January 16th, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay. I would refer to page, I would refer to page 7 of that document specified to. Things are specifically rated as variances. It says variance required. No mention made of a design exception.
And we've noticed variance relief.
Okay. I misspoke. They previously had been designed exceptions. And the architectural elements that they are not in compliance with are actual variances.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner.
I just want to be clear that we have noticed for that variance relief.
We'll notice this in proper order. I reviewed way back.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. The next person that has their hand raised is Maria Peretti. Please go ahead and ask your questions.
Before you do so, please identify yourself with the record and spell your name and give us your address, please.
Hi, yes, I'm Maria Peretti.
Okay.
I'm at 305 Sixth Avenue, directly across the street from the proposed new building.
And how do you spell Peretti?
P as in Peter, E-R-R-E-T-T-I.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Mrs. Savarese, how many variances are you requesting?
That's really not a question for the architect, that is similar to the last question. Other than Donna, that's a question for planner. He's not, he's an architect. He wouldn't testify about variances.
Okay. Next question is, I was looking at one, the original rendering of the building, and it stated that the decorative element, which is no longer there, but the original decorative element brought the building height up to 42 feet. What is the new proposed height?
38 feet. And if you look at what's here, this is what we're not building. This has the decorative elements, which are about 30 inches or so in scale, which gets you to that 42 feet. This is not happening, and what is happening is this. So, and we all have to remember that the section of the building was, it's just at the corner that's high, it's not the entire building. So in this case, it's about 40, 45 square feet of this building is high.
And the height of it is...
But less than the height of some of the adjacent buildings.
The question specifically was, how high is it presently? So could you give us that again?
38 feet. I'm sorry. I was answering before. Forgive me.
Okay. If there are, well, I guess this is for planning again. If there are so many variances required, why have, why have the height limitations and setbacks on the books if someone's gonna come along and ask for all these variances? It's going to set a precedent.
That's a question for, you're actually testifying, but the question is a relevant question to ask of the planner, not of the architect.
Is there a way to eliminate that section where the number 300 is on the design?
No, because that tower, arrows right here get you out to that roof terrace, and that's one of the design features that the owner would like to have as an amenity.
So if a house next door to it gets sold, they can go just as high?
They need justification to do that, but a planner should be telling you that.
And looking at this rendering here, is that glass? The two long?
Yes, that is a stair tower. That is glass.
That's all glass.
Which again, gives the illusion of less bulk because you can see through it.
Okay. Um, well, okay. That's it. I am, you know, I'm not pleased about the design, but.
Ms. Perretti, you can have your chance to state your comments at the end of the presentation, so please hold that until then. Do you have any other questions?
No, that's it for now.
Thank you very much. And the next person I have, Mr. McNolli. Please go ahead and ask your relevant questions.
Mr. McNolli, please state your name for the record. Tell us your address, please.
Ernest McNolli, M I C N O L I, 400 Deal Lake Drive, apartment five D, Asbury Park, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question. So the modification that you made to the stair tower, did you modify it to be a little a little lower or a little wider? Or I'm just trying to understand.
Modified it to lower as previously testified. The height of the stair tower on the first floor, seven feet, the height of the overall height on the top floor, thereby giving us overall height from here to the bottom of thirty-eight feet. When it was with decoration, forty-two feet. And we've actually taken out.
And you testified there was a certain amount of roof coverage that this stairwell design would take of the overall, I guess, flat roof terrace roof. And what percentage was that? Is it the same original? Or did you not only modify the height a little bit and take the decorations off, but did you change the amount of roof space that this stairwell will sit on?
Nearly look at the rendering, the roof that was high at the old forty-some odd foot height, is now only thirty-eight feet. This height on the three hundred back, so the crest of the roof is lower and gradually meets the ordinance. So you're going from a on top of the building that looks like what we have here versus what we originally designed, modified. It looks like that. So all that bulk to the west of this tower is gone.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Savaris. Mr. McNolli, we're getting interference on your end. So if you have a, if you're connected with two devices, please turn your speaker off on one of them or your microphone.
I don't have that, but is it better now?
I'm not sure. It's when someone else is speaking. I think we could still hear it, but when I muted you, it went away. So all right, we'll continue. And if it's bad, we'll try again.
But I don't have another device, a computer going, but anyway, so so when you, I think you're talking, I think you mentioned that the height of the building itself, not counting the stairwell, is thirty, about thirty feet, correct?
I don't remember. I don't have these numbers off the top of my head. I'm sorry. Head's a little bit foggy tonight.
No, that's okay. So.
No, let him answer the question.
So he said it was thirty-three feet to the top of the rail and thirty feet to the low parapet. Remember, the only thing we're asking for a variance in height for is this section of the building right here, which I need to get out.
The scope of the question. He asked you for the height, you gave it to him. Please, I know you're not my witness, but please just answer the question.
Sure.
Okay. The railings are about three feet. I guess that's for a rooftop deck. I don't know. Is that, is that code what's required?
If we meet the code, yes, they're about three feet.
Okay, in other words, because there'll not only be traffic up there, but it's used as a rooftop deck. So three feet meets, I guess, all the requirements.
No, actually, forty-two inches meter, but their deck is lower than the edge of the decorative parapet. Suffice it to say, it will be a legal railing on top of the roof.
Okay. When someone is standing on the rooftop deck, will it go up three feet on their person or will it go up forty-two inches on their person?
I just testified that the roof level is lower than the parapet height and will go up to forty-two inches on the person.
Okay, so it's a forty-two inch railing. Is it solid?
He didn't say it was a forty-two inch.
Will be forty-two inches from the roof. It is not a solid rail. It's as it started to render. It's bars. You can see through them.
Okay, it's bars. So that, I guess it would be correct that when it's set up and people are going up there to enjoy the rooftop deck, a five or six-foot person would be walking around. So someone riding by is going to see half of a human being above that. And I don't mean that in a negative way. I just meant that I don't see in character any other building in that area.
He's testifying.
Ask your question.
Do you think that that'll be a little bit out of character with the neighborhood with an active rooftop deck with?
No.
Okay. And you are asking for an exception for that?
No.
Or variance?
You asked that question to the planner.
Okay. Okay. And is it only what this gentleman has said or when Ms. Miller put in a few things about the the driveway, et cetera? Does that make it that we can question or no?
About the testimony that this man gave.
Only about what he said?
That is correct.
Okay. And you said that different from the last time on Sixth Avenue. You made that door operational. And do you mean like as by code? Does that, does that mean that the the address of the building will be on Sixth or it will remain with the two entrance, whatever on the side street there? What is that web or whatever that is?
Both doors are operational. The address is on Sixth.
The address is on Sixth, but to accommodate, I guess, the request, you made the front door, which was originally.
It's operational. The door works.
Okay, in other words, not only does it work, but there's stairs to go up and go in, right? It's not just.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think I think because you didn't say too much tonight, I don't have too many questions, but comments are coming tonight?
We'll see.
Okay. And then is a planner, and I, who's coming next? An architect?
No, this is.
You're the architect. What did you say was coming next? The planner?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. No other question.
Thank you, Mr. McNolli. Do we have anyone else, Irene, in the public?
No, I don't show anyone else. Please continue.
Okay, Mr. Karas, back in your court.
Thank you. At this time, I'd call Mr. Roberts for his continuing testimony.
Andy, is anything else up or?
Yeah, why don't you just leave it up for now?
Okay, Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Yeah, please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about to given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name for the record, your profession, and your affiliation with the F.
David G. Roberts, licensed professional planner, DG Roberts Planning and Design LLC, a planning consultant on the project.
Thank you.
Mr. Roberts, do you recall that you had provided some testimony at the last hearing?
Yes, I do.
Okay. What I'd like you to do, if you recall where you ended up, to continue with that testimony, I think we're around the community design standards at that point.
Yes, I believe that's correct. I had already summarized, once again, the traditional bulk type standards, the density, all being driven by the size of the lot, thirty-five by a hundred, and its location on a corner. Those two factors drive most of the traditional relief. In the intervening time period between my first testimony and last month, it was determined that the community design standards also apply. The board's planner had added that analysis to her review letter, and that's where I was beginning to provide some background on how those community design standards were developed in around nineteen ninety-five. As I mentioned before, it was one of the last things, one of the last tasks I did before I left the city in nineteen ninety-five. And I was giving some background to the board in terms of the reason for, or at least what was driving the incorporation of those standards into the ordinance back at that point in time in nineteen ninety-five. And I think what I can do is just pick up where in section thirty-sixty-nine point four, which is the portion of the community design standards that starts off with new construction, which is what we're dealing with here. I think I've testified in the past when I lived in around the block in the esplanade between nineteen eighty-five and nineteen ninety-five, that lot had been vacant. So we know it's been vacant for a number of decades now at least. So the new construction standard would definitely apply here. The community design standards were developed to anticipate both new infill development within these neighborhoods, these traditional neighborhoods, as well as expansions or alterations to existing homes with the objective of trying to keep the expansion and alterations of existing homes consistent with the homes around them. And one of the things you'll note in that first section under new construction is that we required at the time a building to be constructed on a vacant lot within a designated district must have two stories, must have two stories, unless fifty percent or more of the existing homes on the same block and facing the same street. So the block front, not both sides of the block, but the block front itself have less than two stories. And the reason we were doing that, did that at the time is I think I referenced it the last time, just to refresh the board's memories, is the first new infill development that the city was seeing in decades at that time were effectively modular homes, one-story modular homes turned sideways on the lot, which meant that you saw the side of the house from the street. We didn't have anything in our ordinance to try to prevent that. One of the things we tried to do in this particular section of community design standards, which applied both on the east side of town and on the west side of town, and it was the west side of town where we were getting some of this this type of development that we were trying to discourage, was to to discourage ranch homes where most of the homes were two and a half stories, and most of those neighborhoods on both and both sides of Main Street, the most common predominant style was the two and a half story. And the half stories were were significant. They were attics that were habitable. But traditionally, two and a half stories with a front porch. The front porch was elevated, and it had a number of steps to get to it. That was the traditional development that had occurred over a period of time. That was the prevailing character in those particular areas. We were trying to maintain that. So that's the first point I wanted to make. And then, as Donna mentioned in her letter, in this particular case, you have a block front that runs from park to web. Along that, along that block front, you have two apartment buildings as you move from park to web. One that has about two hundred feet of frontage, the other, which is in the center of the block, has three hundred feet of frontage. The total block width is six hundred feet. The remaining hundred feet is divided into the twenty-five-foot wide and forty-foot wide lot lots that are immediately between the apartment building and the corner, which is the subject site, and the subject site itself, which is thirty-five feet wide. Basically, in that block front, as opposed to across the street, where you have the traditional line of two and a half story or three-story wood frame dwellings of different types with front porches in most cases, or other types of either window treatments, roof lines, other things that were characteristic of that timeframe when those homes were built. As opposed to that, on our side, we had an apartment building that was probably, I think Donna mentioned, it's built in the seventies or eighties. I'd say that's probably, I would say probably pre-eighty-five, at least when I was there, the building was built when I moved in in nineteen eighty-five. That building, it predominates, it takes up fifty percent of the block, and it has a hip roof, it has balconies all around, and not lock, if any, of the types of examples in the community design standards that were offered as massing, things to break up the mass. As, at the same time, you know that the original idea for this art deco modern architectural style was actually pulled from the redevelopment plan, which references it as one of the encouraged architectural stylings. In this particular location, even though the two buildings to, on the Sixth Avenue side, immediately next to the corner, have the two and a half story wood frame with a front porch, and the two structures that face Web Street on the other side have the two and a half story wood frame with the front porch as Mr. Savaris has already outlined in his building elevations. The remainder of the buildings, pretty much on both sides of each of those two block fronts, do not have front porches, except for the house on the corner facing Sunset Avenue on the backside of the block, which is in a different zone. It's in the R three zone. So I think that in this particular case, and I think Donna made reference to it in her letter as well, in terms of the intent, the original intent of these community design standards, as they're applied to this situation and this particular block front, this lot is unique in terms of where it's situated, given what's on the same side of the block front on Sixth Avenue, what's on the same side of the Web Street side, and then actually what's across the street, which is actually the renewal, the redevelopment area, the renewal area portion of the redevelopment plan, where future buildings are more likely to have that, or at least potentially could have that art deco modern style of architecture, because it's in governed by the redevelopment plan. So that really applies to the massing, the roof treatments, as was referenced, and then the ornamentation, all of which showed examples of Palladian windows, a lot of the things you would see, the balusters on the front porches, all the things you might see on a more traditional Victorian Queen Anne style home in various parts of the city, but not particularly in this block front. I think that pretty much speaks to the intent of the community design standards, but there's one other point I wanted to make on it. In thirty-sixty-nine point six, there's an additional standard in the community design standards that deals with undeveloped lots, which would also apply in this particular case. And it says that a building to be constructed on a vacant lot located in a block shall include design features typical of the election district in which the property is situated. The election district in this particular case, and I think the reason we may have selected that, it was many, several decades ago, but I suspect that the potential, the reason for selecting the election district, it had a tendency to group the neighborhoods into sections of the city that corresponded with certain timeframes, like the the east side developed first, the west side developed in the later years at the turn of the century and so on. But in this particular case, the election district is election district six, which is bordered by Grand Avenue to the west, the ocean to the east, and it runs from fourth to eighth. So it runs two blocks over to the south, and it runs all the way to Eighth Avenue to the north. So we would be in that election district, and that election district, if you were to look at the various types of architecture, the various types of buildings within that district, there is a wide variety. It's an eclectic area. Certainly, the, one of the most traditional types of architecture would be the timeframe around the eighteen eighties to turn of the century, but as time went on, there around the eighteen eighties to turn of the century, but as time went on, there were apartments, buildings constructed in that area, in that, in that district, as well as the townhouses that were referenced earlier in both, the early letter that CCH had done and the, and my presentation, which referenced the townhouses on the corner of a park and Deal Lake Drive, which have the similar art deco modern type architecture as the current proposal. So given all of that, I believe the board can justify treating this particular corner, which is a very unique corner, facing the redevelopment area on one side, and, and, and providing the corner feature between Sixth and Webb, and, and treat it independently of the community design standards for all the reasons I stated.
No further questions.
Are you done, Mr. Roberts?
I think that was my main point, yes, just, just to deal with the community design standards and give the board some background and some justification for the relief.
I appreciate that. Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Roberts?
I do. So I guess, are you saying that you, you know, the design standards, I'm having a hard time connecting what you did in the nineties to what the design standards are now. Can you make a better connection?
Well, actually, they haven't changed, Ms. Ashman. They, they have remained unaltered since nineteen ninety-five when they were written. Obviously, the city was in a different place back then than it is now, but I'd say, and actually, the redevelopment plan that the city has in place today is not the same redevelopment plan that was in place in nineteen ninety-five. So there's been a number of changes along the redevelopment, in the redevelopment arena, and the city's seen a lot of redevelopment since nineteen ninety-five, which I'm very happy to see, with a lot of different styles of architecture in the redevelopment area. This, this property is unique in that it's on the edge of the redevelopment area, on the corner, and technically within the renovation area, the rehab area. But my, my point really is that when you look at this block front, which is what that, those standards are focused on, the, the two buildings that occupy five hundred linear feet out of six hundred feet of block front are the dominant architectural feature, and they are not themselves in character with the typical two and a half story wood frame home with a front porch, such as is on the opposite side of Sixth Avenue facing this block. So effectively, this building, which has balconies similar to those apartment buildings, in fact, the balconies line up with the frontages of those buildings, actually has more in common from a balcony standpoint than a traditional Victorian or Queen Anne, or whatever you might find in other parts of that same district. And that's why I feel this block is unique, and this corner lot is even more unique because it's right on the edge of the redevelopment area.
But haven't we had, I know we have had reexaminations to the master plan, and maybe there's a question mark for Donna. Have there been anything that has changed for, especially this, this zone, R-two?
Donna may be muted.
Sorry, hit the wrong buttons. Hi, Donna Miller. So Mr. Roberts is correct, while there have been changes over the years to the waterfront redevelopment plan and its standards, only until recently has the city really taken, you know, a serious look at the community design standards, and that's in this most recent zoning amendment, you know, revision that's going on. In fact, the planning board last night referred back all of the zoning amendments to council for adoption. Basically, the only very minor changes were made to the community design standards, except for the fact that they're being moved out of the zoning section of the ordinance, so that they will no longer have the weight of a variance if you deviate. And we've lightened some of the standards for additions to existing buildings, so that we can have a little bit more flexibility for single and two-family homeowners, you know, who want to do renovations to their homes, they're not so strictly tied to a particular architectural style.
Donna, can I interrupt you for one second?
Yeah, sure.
Is this particular property still considered in the historic Sunset Lake District or not?
I want to say no. Isn't that only up to, I don't have to refer. Yeah, I don't think that comes this far, this far north or south. I, I don't, I don't mention it in our report.
No, you didn't.
And I can quickly check the map just to verify, but I want to say it's not within the historic, the historic district.
But it is in the infill waterfront redevelopment area.
Correct. And it's in the R-two, which is the, you know, residential district. So hang on, I'm just going to double-check the, the map for the...
I love looking at the zoning map.
No, not the zoning map. The map of the historic districts.
Right.
Which is a little clearer. But like I was saying about the ordinances, the community design standards are, you know, as recommended by the master plan, are kind of being demoted a little bit. Again, that doesn't apply to this application, this application still has to treat the deviations as variances, but historic districts. And of course, it's a map, so it's going to load really slow. Yeah, so the Sunset Lake Historic District only goes as far east as the west side of Park to Sunset, and then it's just the park property, so it doesn't, it doesn't extend down Webb.
Okay.
Or on this block at all.
So Donna, you're saying that the city master plan and ordinances are moving more towards letting more eclectic design in these areas?
So again, the, the planning board made recommendations to reduce or make less strict the obligation for additions to existing dwellings to not have to match so, you know, so completely. They're going to give a little more leeway on roof pitch and building materials.
What about new construction, then?
New construction is still pretty much the same as the text is now. So, so again, regardless, the code is still in effect today and applies to this application. So what you're seeing, you know, is, is what they have to comply with, consistency with the master plan-wise. You know, again, the recommendations weren't so much to change the standards, but to lighten the load of the standard, so to speak, because again, we're not, as a design exception rather than a variance, we have to prove negative criteria, so, you know, again, it's, in planning jargon, a little bit of a lighter lift to prove the deviation is acceptable and not harmful to the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roberts, my second question is, what, I lost my note, sorry. Do you, in your opinion, believe that building this type of structure that needs, you know, three different variances, or four different variances, is it going to be a detriment to the neighborhood?
I would say, again, in this, because of this particular lot is where it is on the corner and on the very edge of the border between the rehab area and the redevelopment area, and knowing that in the future, potentially, especially when you see that what's across the street in the redevelopment area from this property is right now a parking lot for an existing older apartment building, which could very easily be redeveloped at some point in the future, and the architecture on that side of the street is going to be governed by the redevelopment plan, that makes this lot different than if it were, say, in the center of the block, or if it was across the street in the middle of that line of, of homes that are the more traditional turn-of-the-century homes with the front porches. And also because of, if you, if you take the, for example, the two lots immediately to the, to the west of, of the corner, which is the, the three, the two, three-family homes with the front porches, together, they constitute sixty-five feet of frontage. That's little, slightly more than ten percent of the entire block front. That the more, the dominant architectural statement being made on that side of the block is the apart, two apartment buildings that had to take up the entire rest of that block front. They have balconies like this building, not that I'm comparing this building with an apartment building, but architecturally, they're not, it is not out of place. And so that, as a result, in my opinion, it would not do damage to the purpose and intent of the community design standards in this location. Again, if this was somewhere else in the district, or somewhere else in a, in a different type of block front, my opinion would, would be different. But in this particular location, I think it is that all of the, all of the justification for making an exception applies.
So you're referring to the two long apartment buildings? I don't have addresses, but the, like, yellow-looking building?
Yeah, the building on the corner of Park and Sixth has about two hundred feet of frontage on Sixth. The building in the middle, I can't remember the name of it, but the largest, obviously the largest single building on the block, and it's the one that Mr. Savarrez showed in his, in fact, it's shown on the elevation that's, that you can see now, and that gives you a pretty good idea. The only, that doesn't, that, that illustration doesn't go all the way to Park, but the property that's immediately to the left, if you're looking at that, that illustration, is there, is in another apartment building that has two hundred feet of frontage. So when you add those two up, it's five hundred feet. The property that we're talking about is thirty-five feet, and the other sixty-five feet is the two properties that I'm speaking of, that are the only two structures on the, on the block that have front porches. And incidentally, those front, front porches, as you can see in Mr. Savarrez's diagram, protrude out closer to the, to the sidewalk. In other words, they have a lesser front yard than the balconies of both the proposed two-family and the apartment building, all the way down the rest of the block. And then as you go down Webb, you can see in Mr. Savarrez's drawing as well, that the decks that are proposed there come right out to the, right out to the property line. They also have front porches, and they are the two and a half stories. But what isn't shown in Mr. Savarrez's elevation underneath that he's pointing to now, is that there's an additional two-family house in the back, which has a flat roof. I don't know how, that, those buildings obviously are quite old, and that, that building goes back quite a long time, probably. That whole situation, as you can imagine, is a non-conforming situation, because the ordinance wouldn't allow more than one individual dwelling on one piece of property. So, and I think there's, I believe I said there was four, I think there's two single families in the front and a two-family in the back, the two-family has a flat roof. So when you take all of that into consideration, proposing a sort of an innovative design, as has been customized for this particular lot, I believe has some benefit in terms of setting the table for what might happen in the future across the street, and it lines up consistent with the height and bulk along Sixth and Webb. If you look at that diagram, basically, the intent was to line the facades up on both sides of the block, which was always the intent of the ordinance is going all the way back. We always tried to have block fronts be consistent from end to end. So as you went around the corner, you wouldn't have any, any particular building sticking out in front of any other building that would be obtrusive. So I think that this, this application has tried to do all of that. The only real issue, it seems like, is the particular architectural style that has been, has been used here, but it's, it's been customized for this particular lot, and I think it works, given this location, and it won't be out of place, and actually will be a kind of a step up in quality when you look at the condition of the two houses on, on Sixth Avenue right next door to it. I hope that, I hope that helps a little bit.
It does, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all my questions for now.
Thank you, Brittany. Anyone else on the board have any questions for Mr. Roberts?
Wait, Mr. Roberts, which house has the flat roof? What were you...
If you look at, yeah, if you look at Michael's diagram, he's circling it now with his pointer. On Webb Street, there's, there's actually three homes or three dwellings on that piece of property. There's two single families side by side, and then a two-family.
Oh, I see it.
It's a two, it's either a two or a three-story building in the back. It shows up on the aerial Googles that I had shown the board in the past. Yeah, two stories, with a flat roof.
So I'll ask again, anyone else on the board have any further questions for Mr. Roberts? Okay. Board professionals, do you have any questions for Mr. Roberts? All right, so then let's open it up to the public arena.
I do not see any hands raised at the moment. Oh, here, here they come, okay. Maria Peretti, please go ahead and speak.
Yes, Mr. Savarrez, the original design of this building, I'm looking at...
Excuse me, you're questioning Mr. Roberts, correct? Not Mr. Savarrez?
Oh, no, 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 sorry. Okay, no, no, no. Never mind. I had a question for Mr. Savarrez.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peretti. And the next person is Mr. Baumgarten. Go ahead and ask your questions.
Good evening, folks.
Hello.
Hi, Warren. Hey, hello, Dave. Dave, great testimony about the design regulations. I've followed it myself for decades, as you know. Do you have a copy of that in front of you by any chance?
Just, I just have, yeah, I do have section thirty-sixty-nine in front of me.
Okay, could, could you just refer to thirty-sixty-nine dot two applicability?
Sure, I'll just read it, it's just one, one or two sentences. "The standards of this section shall apply to all residential historic districts now or hereafter designated, and to all R-one, R-two, R-one A, and P-O residential zones, as shown on the official zoning map as amended, which are hereby designated as historic districts for the purpose of this section."
Okay, so this is saying correctly that R-two districts, which this is, is a historic district, correct?
For the purposes of the community design standards.
Yes.
That's the way we chose. At, at the time we did that, we felt that because we had just adopted a historic preservation element for the first time in the city's history, I think about three years before this, that we needed to make reference to that historic, that historic master plan element, so that the standards would have some, it would be less likely they'd be challenged.
Absolutely. I've followed your work intently, and I'm glad you're testifying tonight about that. So for the record, this is a historic district as far as these regulations go, correct?
As far as the community design standards go, they're treating it...
As far as the community design standards go, they're treating it like as an historic district.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, are you familiar with the other district that was being inquired about, the Sunset Lake District? Do you have any knowledge about that?
I don't. I then must have been after my time because I don't recall that being considered. We had a number of historic districts back in nineteen ninety, but I don't believe that was one of them.
Okay, um. Could you then refer to um section sixty-nine point one, which is the purposes of this design standard?
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, that that one's a little longer. I don't know if you want me to read that or do you have?
Could you read that into the record, just so the um the board members understand exactly what the purpose of this is?
Well, with the chairman's permission, I I would be happy to.
Okay.
Please do, Mr. Roberts, as long as it's not excessive.
Uh, it's it's a it's a paragraph, Mr. Chairman, but I'll 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 read it quickly. Pursuant to the municipal land use law, H J S A forty fifty-five D dash sixty-five I, this section is intended to preserve and protect the character of residential neighborhoods in the city in a manner consistent with their architectural history as set forth in the historic preservation element of the Asbury Park Master Plan of nineteen ninety and the land use plan element of the land of the Asbury Park Master Plan in nineteen ninety-four. The standards contained herein are designed to provide for new development on vacant lots and additions to existing structures that are consistent and complementary to the original homes and buildings in low-density residential neighborhoods so as to preserve and enhance property values for the public welfare.
Thank you, Dave. Um, now going going to your testimony about developed lots versus undeveloped lots, uh, could you please explain what the distinction is, uh, since you pointed out uh that there's a section in here that refers to an undeveloped lot? What is the technical definition of an undeveloped lot?
Well, actually, there that it's really similar in that basically, I guess, the real definition is that it's the same as a vacant lot. Um, it's there's different reasons why lots are 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 either vacant or undeveloped. Um, but I think the that in both cases, we were looking to deal with infill development in a way that would um not be out of character with the block fronts. And we use block fronts as our measuring stick. Uh, because and part of the reason for that is that, as has already been talked about, Asbury Park is a very diverse and somewhat eclectic in terms of its architectural styling and the way it developed over time. So sometimes block fronts differ from block to block, even in the same neighborhood. Um, so we were looking to try to get consistency within the block front, the the properties facing that particular street from one side of the block to the other.
Well, uh, tha- thank you. I I I think you've added a little too much more detail to what I was looking for. Isn't it true that an undeveloped lot is literally raw land that has not had utilities brought to it?
I would say that in terms of this ordinance, there's really no difference between an undeveloped lot and a vacant lot, from my recollection.
In terms of general land use and planning, isn't it true that an undeveloped parcel is one that has not had utilities brought to it?
Well, if if that were the case, Warner, I don't think we would have used that term. In Asbury Park, there's utilities to that serve every single lot in the city and have had for over a hundred years.
Okay, so that would then say that all of Asbury is developed?
Well, I would say if the if the property, again, you if you want to if you want to play with semantics, we can, we can do that using the board's time. But I think in this case, my answer is the same. In this particular case, in this ordinance, undeveloped and vacant are basically the same thing.
Why would it be distinctly different? Why?
Going to object at this point. Is there a purpose to this line of examination? Or are we just arguing?
I don't see anybody arguing. Do you?
Um, please get to, please get to the point.
Yeah.
Uh, and and be as brief as possible.
Excuse me, there's no need to be rude. I thought I was making a point.
I'm not being rude, Mr. Baumgartner. I just want you to move it along for everybody.
Excuse me?
I think, Warner, if I may, you you have a differing opinion. He gave his opinion. You disagree with it. I get that. Well, you made that statement, but no sense in engaging in an argument if he's he's giving you his.
I'm not arguing. Dave just testified that.
I know, I just testified, if I may. He just said that in his opinion, a vacant lot is no different than an undeveloped lot in the city. That's his opinion. So you may have a differing opinion and you may be right. I don't know.
And then I asked, why are they differentiated if they're the same? And that's where I was cut off. If he could answer that, why are they differentiated if they are one in the same?
Where are they differentiated?
In the ordinance. He's testified that there's a separate section dealing with undeveloped lots.
Okay.
The only thing I can remember, uh, Warner, is that, and again, I'm I'm gonna have to be um kind of effectively guessing at the rationale, but I would say when you look at the uh sixty-nine dash six, which is undeveloped lots, it talks about the general character of the election district. So it's breaking the city into sort of subneighborhoods based on election districts and allowing you to look at the architectural character of the entire district. So I think that the the idea was with sixty-nine point four, you're looking at that particular block front uh facing that particular street. In sixty-nine point uh six, I think it is, uh, or sixty-nine point six, you're looking at the whole, a larger area of the city and looking what kind of architectural style and characters in that area of the city. That's that would be my answer.
One of those two are we applying in this case? Has to be one or the other?
I think you have to apply both. They both, uh, the entire ordinance that deals, anything that deals with new construction applies to this case. So that's why I I I address both of those sections.
Okay, I'd like I'd like to move on to something that Donna testified to, if I may, regarding the Sunset uh Lake Historic District. Uh, where where is that found? Where is that defined?
Well, that wasn't part of Mr. Roberts' testimony, though.
But Donna did testify to it.
Yeah, but.
No, she didn't testify.
She gave, she she's not subject to cross.
Your your professionals in the past have been subject to cross.
You're, why don't you finish with Mr. Roberts, and then we'll get to see if we let you talk to Mr. to Donna.
Okay, all right. I'm done with Mr. Roberts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. And I have one more hand raised. It's.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm not finished with Mr. Baumgartner yet. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you want to allow Donna to answer any questions of Mr. Baumgartner?
Well, I I was the one that asked the question regarding the Sunset Lake Historic District. It was not Donna who brought it up.
Okay, but I I it was it was requested. He just wanted to know the source.
I just wanted to know whether the property was within the Sunset Lake District.
Right. And Mr. Baumgartner's question is, what's the source of Donna's information? I think that was the question.
I I believe she said she found a map of historic districts of Asbury Park.
Where? In zoning? There is no such zone as Sunset Lake Historic District.
It was not in zoning.
Donna, you're on mute.
Do you want me to address this?
Well, let me just ask the question then, if I may, since Donna's here now.
Go go ahead, Mr. Baumgartner.
Wasn't it true that that district is designated by the county, not the city of Asbury Park?
Donna? Uh-oh, we may have lost Donna.
Can you guys hear me?
You froze at the question.
Here, we can hear you, Donna.
I'm getting all feedback from you guys. I have an unstable connection. I just closed out my other computer.
We can hear you now, Donna.
Yeah, but I can't hear you guys. Or at least I couldn't.
Maybe everyone mute themselves?
No, no, it's my it's my internet connection.
Oh, okay.
Okay, see, so I closed out my other computer that I was VPNing into the office through. So hopefully this will will be better. So I I'm I'm sorry, I didn't hear the discussion. Um, so do you want me to answer?
Can I ask it again?
Go ahead, Mr. Baumgartner.
About the map?
Okay. Is the source of that historic district designation, the county, the state, or the federal government?
The the map I had just referred to tonight is the map of historic districts for the city of Asbury Park that's included in the master plan.
And what is the source of that district? What entity created that district?
I believe that's from the state um uh Chippewa Historic Preservation Office, which combines, which combines, I believe, data from both the state, the federal government, and the county.
So it is not a city of Asbury Park designated district, correct?
I uh. I don't think so. Uh, I.
Thank you.
I don't know the origin of the the designation.
Thank you.
Does that answer your questions, Mr. Baumgartner?
Yes, I believe it does. Answers it for everybody.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. And Mr. McNolly, you are up.
Oh, yeah, Ernest McNolly, M I T N O L I Florida, Del Lake Drive, seven five D S A, South New Jersey. May I just bring a point up before Mr. McNolly asks a few questions? Um, I'm just curious whether or not Mr. McNolly still lives in Asbury Park or whether or not he actually resides in Florida now. Well, you know what? Why don't you ask that of Mr. Passasano, who tells his address?
Answer the question. Answer the question. Don't don't avoid answering the question by talking about Mr. Passano. He has nothing to do with this application. Answer the question.
I don't have to answer that question.
Yes, you do.
Anyone else?
Yes, you do. If you're telling us.
I'll tell you what. I'll tell you what. You guys are going too far now. I'll wait till comments.
Thank you, Mr. McNolly. All right. I don't see any other hands raised. We can continue.
All right, the last witness I have, and just a few questions, is my client, Mr. Siegel. We can have him sworn. He's gonna be sworn in?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was thinking. Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear the testimony about giving this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Peter. Give us, uh, obviously, your name and your affiliation with the applicant.
Uh, so I'm Peter Siegel, S I E G E L. I am the principal of the applicant three hundred sixth LLC.
Fine, man.
Please do, Mr. Garret.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Um, the application tonight, which has we're having hearings on, which was submitted on your behalf, uh, behalf of the entity in which you're a principal, is for a two-family house. Am I correct?
Correct.
And you understand it's a permitted use as are single-family homes. Am I correct? In the R two district, why did you decide to go ahead with a two-family house as opposed to making an application for a one-family house?
So, fair question. Um, it's a unique lot, as has been pointed out numerous times by everybody, our experts and everybody else. It's a corner lot. It's undersized. It's unique. Um, despite the fact that one could technically technically build a single-family house, a variance or variances are still required to build that single-family house. You would have a you would have a fifty by twenty single-family house, which is a one thousand square foot print. And while you could technically build a single-family house, no one would. I wouldn't. No one else would. And you know what else? Andy, no one, no one's gonna buy a single-family house. It's fifty by one twenty, and no one's gonna want to live in a single-family house. It's fifty by one twenty. So it seemed to me that it's an R two zone, we should apply to build a a two-family house. Um, which, as we heard from Mr. Roberts and Mr. Savary's, is has less lot coverage than the other neighboring properties, um, has an innovative design, fits with the community design standards, um, is is a, we hope, a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, not a detriment to the neighborhood visually with the design that's been created. I think it's been established that the design that's been created fits within the approved design standards, the community design standards. Mr. Roberts cited thirty dash six nine tonight, uh, which uh, I appreciate that Mr. Baumgartner agreed with Mr. Roberts' analysis of of having cited that particular piece of language. And so it seemed to me that the going for two families just it it made sense. There's multi-family around. It's surrounded by other two families. It's not the only two-family house sitting amongst single families. It's a two-family house sitting amongst other multi-families. Um, and economically, it it just works. I mean, I would never build uh a a single-family house on this lot just because the the economics just don't permit for it.
Oof, I'm sorry. We're gonna, we're not supposed to be talking about economics here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
They're totally irrelevant to a variance application.
Fair enough. I I'm just answering the question the best I can.
I get it. You're giving it the subjective reasons.
And what about the design? There it's a very interesting design. It's uh that's being proposed here. And we've had testimony from the architect and also the planner with regard to how the design fits within the community design standards in the ordinances of Asbury Park. Did you assist in coming up with this design? Did you approve the design? Tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, I did. I we worked very, very hard uh together with with the whole team who's been uh part of these these hearings since the beginning to come up with an innovative design that we felt uh not only was in line with and consistent with all the design standards and zoning and plan standards that we had to adhere to, but just would look great and would be a a real uh a a real contributor to the beautification of the neighborhood into the town. You know, Asbury Park's a progressive, uh, diverse town. We need housing, by the way. So I, you know, I if I'm gonna build housing, I want to build just something that looks great. I take a lot of pride in my projects and what I do. I I I hope that as a resident, as a member of the community, that people perhaps say that about my work sometimes and what we do. I mean, you know, it it's it's a lot of work to 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 make stuff look right and to look good. And, you know, sure, I could build a a cheaper builder's grade thing, you know, but like, we wanted to make something that looked awesome, that was unique, that maybe will win an award or get talked about as in a positive light. You know, that that is something that I want for for the my work product and what I want for the community where I live and work. So I I, you know, I we worked hard to come up with this design.
All the questions I have. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Siegel? Hmm, okay. Board professionals, do you have any questions for Mr. Siegel? All right, and then we'll open it up to the public. Irene, please.
Thank you, Mr. Avaloni. I have I show one hand raised. Mrs. Peretti, please go ahead and ask your question of Mr. Siegel.
Hi, Peter.
Hi, Maria.
Would you be opposed to lowering the height?
Um, I wasn't opposed, and that's why we did lower the height. Uh, we went from forty-two to thirty-eight. Uh, in particular, Maria, to uh address your comments from the previous hearings and that of the board members from the previous hearings. But I remember specifically that you mentioned the height in in the previous meeting. And um, so your your comment was a a had impact on the design. And we went back to the drawing board and and came up with what we presented to you guys uh here today, uh, based on your comments before. So I I was was not opposed to lowering the height, and that's how we got to where we are here today.
The reason I ask is because the original design had a total height of thirty-six point six inches. It did not have like a tower. I'm looking at the original design. like a tower. I'm looking at the original design that I found on.
Right. I, I don't know what you're looking at, Maria, but I, I, I know that, uh, and this is maybe our sixth or seventh or eighth hearing here tonight, uh, on this project. So I don't know what version you're looking at. I do recall that height did fluctuate a bunch, but that was connected to other things. So for example, being in a flood zone, we had to raise it. And then we had to lower it, then we'd deal with the stairs, then we had to deal with ingress. So all that stuff caused the height and other features of the property's design to fluctuate throughout those six, seven, or eight meetings until we get to this point where we are tonight. So with all due respect, I just don't know what you're looking at right now when you cite a height. Uh, but I know that last hearing it was 42, and now it's 38, and it's 38 because of you. Because of our wanting to appease you. That's what I meant.
Well, I appreciate that, but I'm also looking at the original design, which is 36.6, because it did not have, I believe it's a tower. Um, or what you call an over, overlook? Above the roof, like the, the thing that, that the part that sticks out. Um, I would, so the document that I'm looking at is from, uh, Michael Savarrez, and on the document, would I be able, if I tell you what, what, tell me where to look, um, for the date? Um, it looks like it's so, such a small print.
Is it an exhibit you're referring to? Does it say?
Yes, yes.
What's the exhibit?
Where would I find the exhibit number?
And I think we need to unmute Donna.
Hi, this is Donna. I might be able to help clarify.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so.
Oh, here it is. Sheet number A-102. Um, and it looks like it's dated March 4th of 2019.
So the original design for the building called for sinking the first floor into the ground. So part of the building and the calculation of building height was reduced because of the amount of the building that was sunk into the ground. Because the property is in a flood hazard area, they can't do that design. They have to bring the bottom floor up out of the ground. And it has to be at basically elevation 11, for, if you can understand that. Um, so they can't, they can't put that ground floor into the ground anymore. It has to be at the, basically the surface level of the ground today. So, um, that's why the building is higher, um, in this design than in that original, um, scheme.
The livable space actually has to be, uh, almost, what, 11 feet above the ground?
It, it has to be a foot above the flood elevation. So in this case, it works out to about elevation, uh, 11, correct? So, but that's why the, the height calculation in that original, that original design seemed lower. Um, but they can't actually build the building that way. So it has to be higher.
Thank you, Donna. That, that's what I tried to say.
Okay. I also have a question regarding the lighting. What kind, are, are you gonna be using low-impact lighting?
And that's really a question for the architect.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say that's beyond the purview of this witness's testimony.
When you had the architect up, that was a question you should have asked of him.
Can I, can I, can I, as, since it's my floor, can I just answer what I am able to answer for Maria? So Maria, I, I appreciate the question about lighting. Uh, I'm your neighbor. I live in the area. Lighting in, on the streets and the blocks surrounding where I live are of paramount importance to me as I drive up and down the streets at night. Um, and as I'm inside my house at night, I don't wanna get blasted by anything, and I don't wanna you know, have anything stick out like a sore thumb. And I, perhaps you're asking that question for those reasons and others, but, um, I'm, I'm very conscious about that. And while these guys just deferred you to ask that question of the architect, I will tell you that I believe that we made a, a lighting plan for this property, which is very respectful and conscious of those reasons. And.
And just to interrupt you for a second, Mr. Siegel, as part of the testimony of previous Mr. Savarrez, um, we, we did have it as a condition that there would be low-impact lighting and that a lighting plan would be provided to our engineer.
Thanks, I was getting there. Thank you. Okay.
And we, and we would agree to that, of course, as a condition.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you, Ms. Peretti. And I do not see any other hands raised, so I believe we can move on.
Okay. Thank you, Irina. So, Mr. Karas, um, at this point, uh, do you have any other further witnesses?
No further witnesses.
Okay. So Jack, do we go to public comment at this time?
Yes, yes.
Before, I would move all the exhibits into evidence.
Thank you. So moved. Uh, I wanna make sure we understand things. The word "public comment" is, is, it's not just a public comment. Anybody that testifies before these boards gets sworn in. So you're testifying. You're giving testimony. It's not just a public comment about anything you desire. It has to be related to the application. Matter before the board. So the comments have to be relevant, no different than the questions that people give. And you're under oath, so you're obligated to tell the truth because you're testifying. It's not just a public comment. With that in mind, let's, uh, let's proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Serpico. So, uh, you'll, every, every, anyone in the public who would like to make a comment regarding either for or against this application, you will have four minutes to do so, and please make it relevant to the application. Do we have anyone in the public, Irina, with a raised hand?
Yes, I show one person. Mr. McNolli, please state your name. You'll be sworn in, and then we'll start the clock.
Um, just for the record, I'm going to object unless he is a resident of Asbury Park. He lives in Florida.
We're gonna get there. We're gonna get there. Mr. McNolli, please state your name for the record.
He's on mute.
Ernest McNolli, M I G N O L I.
And please give us your address.
Which one?
Where, you've been saying all along that you live at 400 Dill Lake Drive.
That's exactly right. That's my legal voting address at present. I still own it.
Okay.
But you seem to have lawyers that wanna fool around.
Don't, no need for you to go beyond my questions and answers.
Okay. 400 Dill Lake Drive, apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey. I presently own and I've owned since August of 2007.
Okay.
And do you reside there?
I, of course I do. It's my home.
Okay, well, I just asked you the question. All you gotta do is answer it. Okay.
I don't see you doing this with anybody else.
Mr. McNolli, you're not gonna question me. You do that one more time, and you're gonna be held to be out of order, and you're not gonna speak. So I suggest that you get to your comments. Don't do that with me. Start the clock, please. Objection noted by Mr., uh, Mr. Karas.
Thank you. Okay, uh, so I, I feel that this project from the start, one of my main concerns, living in the neighborhood. Uh, I'm sorry, don't you, did you swear me in?
If not, we'll do it. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're gonna give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, go right ahead.
So having lived in the area for, um, 14 years, uh, I, when I, when I saw this project, I think the main thing that I, I didn't like, of course, was that I, when I saw some of the renderings, I really didn't think it fit in, but, but I, I know that the, the city is very flexible these days about design standards. So, but what I was really objecting to was the conversion of the front entrance to make an entrance on web, and then to make a driveway on web, and then to cut curbs and take away parking spaces, because anyone who lives in that area knows, even now during the winter, summer, whenever, the parking is beyond precious. And, and, you know, wh-what I tend to hear about this project is, uh, issues that, well, we never, we never really knew what happened there, but if I'm not mistaken, I think there was a house there that was picked up and moved. That may be the lot. I'm not sure. And, and, and certainly, to replace it with this, uh, to me, is, is, doesn't, it doesn't fit in. And, and the main, main, main problem I have is with the configuration of, of entrances on web, changing what's probably been that way for 100 years. And, and, and then allowing two parking spaces, maybe two and a half or three, to be taken away from an area that is, it, it, it's, it's borderline in- intolerable. And so far, what I always hear at these meetings is, well, you know, we'll just approve this one, and then we'll start to worry about parking in the next time. And I've been hearing that for five, six years, that I've been pretty prudent on this thing about parking. And it keeps getting kicked down the road, you know, that there's these issues where, you know, you, you pay a certain amount into a no-parking fund, and then you get the cut of driveways. But at some point, it, you, you're never gonna park, I don't know, 8,000 cars in 3,000 spots in Asbury. That's where we're headed. So, to me, this could have been a beautiful one-family. It could have been built with a, a, a regular driveway. Well, I'm sick, maybe. I don't know if there might be one. I don't think so. But it probably never had one, because as a one-family, it probably didn't need one. But, but still, I mean, and it couldn't really just fit right in with everything else. Instead, you know, changing the furniture, changing the thing on the top, making like a playground, playground or a deck on the top with, who knows what people are gonna do? Barbecue, play loud music or whatever. It, it's, it's not really, as it's being presented, that, you know, it wanted to fit in. You know, I looked at some of the others. One minute? Yeah. I looked at some of the other projects, and, listen, I don't have an issue with Mr. Siegel. It's a, it's a difference of opinion. He thinks his things are beautiful, and I don't like them. You know, I don't like pictures of animals and squid and fish and flowers. I don't like all that stuff. He thinks it looks beautiful. I don't. I like red brick. Every project he makes, he paints the brick gray. He likes it. He's the owner. But I don't think it's able for him to come on and say that everybody agrees in the city that he deserves a, a design award for aesthetics. Uh, I, I don't see that. So my main objection is what you're doing with the furniture and the parking. And I don't have too much say, because I'm not an immediate neighbor. But, you know, I can't believe that so many neighbors aren't calling up saying, this doesn't fit. Make it maybe look like what was.
One minute.
Thank you, Mr. McNolli. Okay, uh, Irina, please call the next person to comment.
Okay, and the next person, Maria Peretti, please go ahead and, um, state your name and your address, and Mr. Serpico will swear you in, and then we'll begin the clock.
Ms. Peretti?
Maria Peretti, P E R R E T T I, 305 Sixth Avenue, Asbury Park.
Please raise your right hand and let me know that you've done so, because I cannot see you.
I did.
Thank you. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go right ahead.
Peter, I can appreciate, um, your forward-looking vision for this new construction. However, I, I do have my reservations because of the style of the structure. I think it's beautiful, but not on this lot. Um, I think it changes the character of the block. Mr. Roberts testified that we'd, we have, uh, we have newer buildings on the block, built in the 1970s and 80s, and yes, but if you look across the street, they're primarily Victorian homes. I would love to have seen something, even a two fam, two-family in, in a Victorian style, uh, which would complement the block. Uh, and this is for the board. I don't understand why we have height limitations and setback uh, limits and building height limits if variances are granted to, um, to developers of new construction. There is a project being built right now, well, proposed project at, uh, 202, 204 Seventh Avenue, 14 condominiums on two lots. The height limitation is eight stories. However, the developer is only going five stories, which is great. It's a beautiful design, very modern, similar to yours, Peter. But for this block, um, I, I, not only do I dislike the, uh, the design for that lot, but if the board is going to grant, uh, permission for this, I would appreciate you taking into consideration the height limitation and think about all the, uh, all that's being proposed for variances, setbacks, building height, building coverage, and density. Um, nothing against you personally, Peter. Um, I, I, I appreciate all, all the improvements that you have done in the other buildings in town. And I personally like the Mermaid and, uh, all the other designed buildings. And, um, that's it. And I appreciate you taking into consideration the lighting aspect, because there's nothing like having bright lights directly across the street from your house.
One minute.
Agreed.
Um, that's it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peretti. Okay, and I show one more hand raised. Mr. Baumgartner. Please state your name and your address, and then Jack will swear you in. Sorry.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes.
Good. Yep, Warner Baumgartner, 5th Avenue, Asbury Park, appearing as city historian.
Uh, Warner, please raise your right hand, and please let me know that you've done so.
Got it.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony about the given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Um, first of all, I'll just give a personal opinion. Um, it's a terrific building. It's a wonderful-looking building, very modern, very, uh, very interesting. Um, but unfortunately, I'm not here to give a personal opinion. I am the official-appointed historian, and I have to look at what the intent of the land use ordinance is and my experience in studying the evolution of the historic architecture in Asbury Park. I've been here for 40 years doing that and have great expertise, and I hope you take that under advisement. Just a little bit of history. There was a little bit of disingenuous testimony as to why this is an art deco building. It's an art deco building, uh, that was testified to at the very early hearings, because the planner wrote a report stating that an art deco building was permitted, because this was in the waterfront redevelopment area. For those of you that were with us at that time, I corrected that mistake. I brought it to your attention at not one, but two meetings that the waterfront redevelopment standards do not apply to this lot. And now, lo and behold, many, many, many meetings later, the opinion has changed that the community design standards for residential R2 zones do in fact apply, as I had stated over a year ago. So it's very unfair to the applicant for an error like that to have been made that steered the architectural design of this building in a direction that now requires four additional variances for not meeting the design standards. Um, it, it puts the applicant in an awkward position, and it puts the board in a very awkward position. The intent of the design standards are to acknowledge and build upon the historic character of the architectural building. build upon the historic character of the architectural buildings in the area. They've testified about some apartment buildings built in the 70s. There is the concept of ignoring non-contributing elements. Those buildings are not from the historic evolution of Asbury. They were built prior to this ordinance existing, prior to the historic districts being enacted, and they cannot and should not be viewed as a standard to say, well, they exist so we can continue to make that error. Contributing buildings are from the turn of the century, as testified their portions, there are certain roof lines, there is certain mass and scaling. That is what needs to be mimicked here and unfortunately, it's not. Uh, as I said, personally, it's a great, great building. Love it. But professionally, this is not in keeping with the intent of the ordinance and does not fit this historic neighborhood.
One minute.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. And I do not show any other hands so we can continue.
Thank you, Arena. So, uh, at this point, um, Andy, would you like to make your closing remarks?
If I could, no, I'll be very brief. Um, this application has been pending before this board for quite some time. Uh, it's gone through a number, quite a number of revisions, taken it to, uh, consideration, obviously the board's comments, uh, considerations within the neighborhood and, uh, certain neighbors' comments. So a lot has been done with this application to get it to the point where we are here tonight. Um, I think it's a beautiful building and I think based upon the testimony of our planner, it does fit in with the area. When you look at the entire area, when you look at what's on the block and you look at what's existing, um, I believe the planning testimony supports the variance relief that is being requested. It is a small lot, two-family residences are permitted on this lot. Irrespective whether or not it's going to be a one or two-family, the size of the property, the size of the residence is going to be about the same. You're not going to build a 1,000 even 1,500 square foot one-family house. You're going to have to go up a certain height to accommodate the flood elevations. So the way the building is designed on the lot is going to be the same one or two. You're going to require those variances for this particular property. The design and the height fit in with what is within that neighborhood based upon the planning testimony that we have. I think it's innovative. I think it's creative, as is Asbury Park. It adds another two residences to the community and for those reasons, I submit we have satisfied the, all the necessary elements of the variance relief that we are requesting.
Thank you, Mr. Karas. All right, at this point then, um, I want to, I guess, take it directly to the board and see if anyone has any particular comments either for or against this application.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just, just as a, a point, anyone in, in what we're going to be doing now, of course, is deciding, discussing and then deciding the case. However you opt to go on this case, uh, you know, you, I do need, I do need you to elaborate why you're voting the way you're voting. I don't want just a conclusory vote, nothing more, because resolutions have to have findings of fact and a basis for the decision. So keep that in mind when you, uh, when you vote on this. Thank you.
So, let's start with Mr. Slick. Tim, if you could unmute yourself?
Yes, um-
So, how are you, how do you feel about this application?
Uh, I'm, I'm really torn. I think it's a beautiful building. Um, I think the applicant has, you know, bent over backwards to make changes. Um, the height, I honestly don't have that much of a difficulty with it because the bulk of it is, uh, where was it, 31 feet, which is about what the other ones are. It's only that stairwell that goes up a bit, but they did take that down. I understand the functionality. My hangup is the styling. And I, I love the styling. It's, I appreciate it. It's, you know, you know, what it's facing on, will be facing on the, the waterfront, I, I understand that. Um, I'm having trouble with the design standards and how they apply and, you know, I don't have a, a problem with the building itself. It's, it's how the design standards are applied. That's where I'm having an issue. I just, I'm at this point a little undecided. Um, I, I've attended, I'm, you know, a tentative yes because they've done a lot to make this building work on this very small lot. Um, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Tim. I, I understand everything you had to say. Um, and in a lot of ways, I'm in agreement. Um, all right. How about you, Brittany? How do you feel about this particular application?
I'm sure. Well, I do feel that a lot of the positive criteria is met. You know, the hardship, obviously, the, the size of the lot, you would need a variance to build essentially anything. Um, you know, and looking at the height, I do see that, you know, the architect said that it'd be beneficial to have more outdoor space in addition to the balcony. Um, so I do think that's a public benefit. Also, um, the FAR, you know, can the site actually accommodate how big this structure is? Um, that's where I'm a little unsure of. I, I mean, I know like stormwater and everything will be obviously coordinated with our engineer. So, um, I'm okay about that. But, you know, it just, the main takeaway is for me, it is, does it fit in with the neighborhood? And I think the planner did do a good job of helping with the other, um, buildings on the block and especially the gateway to the, you know, this could serve as a gateway to the redevelopment area, waterfront redevelopment area. Um, I think it's the fact that there still are a lot of single-family houses or, you know, a lot of the old, older architecture across the street that kind of hung up for me. Um, so I'm interested to see what other board members have to say.
And I'm with you as well, Brittany. So, um, there are definitely some issues with the building and while it, 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 for me, as you said, it's how well it fits in the neighborhood, but as it borders on the waterfront redevelopment area, um, and is in the infill actually, it, it could be as, as a gateway to the waterfront, which has much more modern designs. Um, but that's where I'm at as well. Uh, Russell, what do you think?
Um, um, I think I expressed a long time ago that I felt this was going to be a heavy lift. I still think it's a heavy lift. Um, I think the applicant has done a really amazing job at trying to tailor this to make it work to the board's satisfaction. I don't believe I'm fully satisfied in balance, to be honest with you. Um, I do not agree that a single-family house does not work on this property. I just, I, I, I reject that. I think a single-family house could, uh, work on this property. I don't deny that there's a two-family status on this, but with this undersized lot, with it being a corner property, I just, and I can't square the, the, the four off-street parking spots and what that I believe is doing to the design of this building. I think those four parking spots are driving the design. Um, it's the, it's the bulk of it. It's the, it's the FAR. The lot coverage, we know. Any, any structure that is going to be proposed before this board on this lot, we're going, we're going to have to give it some variances. That's given. We know that. There's hardship. It's, it's an undersized lot. Um, I, I don't believe that there needs to be a rooftop. I just don't think there needs to be that tower and a rooftop on this. I don't think that that's necessary. Um, I think that could be alleviated. Um, the community di- design standards are certainly, um, important to me. I, I agree with everyone else, um, that I don't have a problem with the design of this building. I do believe that it, it does stick out. I think there's a great opportunity to bring that corner together with the other, um, with the other buildings and other structures that are there and this is not doing that. Um, I, I'm, I'm still struggling with it. It's not, it, it doesn't seem like it, it, it's a, still a big ask. And I disagree that a single-family home is not as desirable or as valuable or would fit on this lot better, but understanding that two is permitted, I just, I, it just feels like it's too much. And it, for me, I'm stuck with the, with the parking. I'm stuck with the four off-street parking and I'm stuck with that, uh, with the rooftop. Those are things that are really hard for me to budge on. But I will say that, uh, I am, uh, extremely impressed with the applicant and how they have brought this before us and their, uh, patience and their professionalism over the past, I don't know how, how long this has been. It's been many, many, many months. Um, and, um, you know, uh, Peter, you're, you're, you and I are friendly and I have a lot of respect for you. Um, but I, I, I'm leaning on, on the side of, of not thinking that this is the best possible project that could be put before us. I think that there's too many considerations that I would have to make in order to approve this. That's where I'm at right now.
I understand as well, Russell. I too struggle with everything regarding the application. Um, I can only say that Mr. Siegel has worked very hard with his architects', uh, designs and met so many of our requests along the way and it has been excessive, excessively long time with this. So I, I, I-
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. Um, there's, um, you know, I'm, I'm a developer as well. I understand the time and the money and the effort it takes to go through this process. But at the end of the, at the end of the day, at the end of this process, as a zoning board member, um, as someone who respects the applicant, I'm not going to let any of that persuade me on what I truly feel about what is proposed before me. I think it, I don't think this building needs to be this tall. I do not think that it needs to have a rooftop. I don't, I, I, I can't square in my head how you get four cars off the street in any structure that makes sense here. And I, the, the design of, I, I, I struggle with that, but it's, it's the nuts and bolts of it that are, it's the base of it that's really challenging for me.
I, 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 I understand completely, Russell's. I, I appreciate all your comments. Um, I'm, I'm not pushing you either, in either direction. I, I just appreciate everything you had to say. Um, we'll just move on and let's ask Ms. Potter. Jill, where, where do you stand on this particular application?
Well, so, one, I want to say to the applicant, you've heard us, you've heard us for months and months and months and you have come back with many changes, redos, agreements. And every time I look at it, I feel like we're still forcing a square peg in a round hole. And I disagree that we can't put a single-family here. Um, you know, my notes are, I feel like it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood. It, it sticks out. It, it, it's a lovely building. I'm not opposed to that structure at all, just not right there. Um, to Russell's point, the rooftop, not sure it's needed. Um, clearly the parking, parking's a concern all over the city, right here specifically, that's bothersome. Um, and I have to feel for the homes across the street and that sets the tone for that neighborhood. And I don't feel like this building, this application ties into that community feel. So I'm not in favor of this project as I sit here right now.
Thank you, Jill. So before I proceed any further, Mr. Karas, Mr. Siegel, how are you feeling about the board comments at this point?
In terms of the roof, that we would not be opposed to any condition eliminating that and then caping the height at 30 feet.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that. Um, that, that will probably have, uh, some help in some of these comments that have been made by the board members. So, uh, let's, let's go on further. Okay. Mr. Harris, how do you feel about this, this particular application? And with the addition that they would cap the height of the building at 30 feet and remove the rooftop. Okay?
I'm kind of torn because I am sitting here on my daughter's birthday and the room next to me, they're celebrating her birthday and she just got engaged and I'm missing it, sitting up here talking about the height of a building. Okay? But I'm doing my due diligence. One, I would not want this built next door to me. Okay? Two, it does not stick with the character of the neighborhood and you must respect the character of the neighborhood. We have built two houses on our street this year and both people came in and stayed with the character of the neighborhood and I think it's incumbent on anyone who puts a house in the neighborhood, they should stick with that character of the neighborhood, whether it's historical or not historical. If this house was on Ocean Avenue and Deal, it would be beautiful, but not, not in that part of Asbury Park. So right now I'm leaning against it and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. That was very clear.
Can I be excused for right now? I'll come back to vote.
Uh, please, go ahead. Just, go ahead, just turn off your video.
Thank you. I'll be back.
Okay. So, uh, Wendy, do you have any particular feeling about this application? As a new member, I know that's a little difficult. Uh, and you know, it's been, it's the first time that you'll be asked about an opinion about such an application, but here you go. You have to unmute yourself.
The process has been eliminating and, and honestly, I, I appreciate watching the, the evolution of the design and the changes that have been made in response to the comments and, and the requests of the, of the board. Um, I have been struggling not to say no because my, my first, my gut impulse is, first it was the rooftop. I, I, I absolutely felt that that was unnecessary. It might've been an attractive feature for prospective tenants or owners, but, um, it just has people towering over the other space and I feel that you lose a sense of privacy, um, around the other houses. So that rooftop was, was a problem for me, but now they proposed, um, eliminating that. But then I still feel that it is, it is a massive feel. Um, and while I'm trying to reach a little bit further and say, okay, it's a more innovative design for that neighborhood and because of the adjacent neighborhoods, I, I'm willing to give some, um, even though it is out of character with the other, um, single and two-family units. It's not to me that out of character relative to the apartment buildings that are in the surrounding area. And I'm, I'm looking at slightly larger than the immediate surrounding area, but if you go, you know, from the esplanade to the apartment, the other apartment building on web, to this one, to the ones on Sixth Avenue, it's not as much of a stretch. Um, but I just feel, I feel overwhelmed by it. And I've never been able to accept the idea that we, the applicant couldn't come up with, uh, something that was a little bit smaller and more suitable to the lot. Obviously, the applicant was aware of the unusual nature of the lot when it was purchased. Um, and I felt that had to be a consideration. So whether it was a single-family or whether it's a two-family, it is something that, um, could fit, the design could fit in a little- could fit, the design could fit in a little bit better with the immediately adjacent units. So overall, I'm still leaning towards a no.
I appreciate your comments. Thank you, Wendy. So not to belabor this point, but Catherine, do you have any comments in regards to this particular application?
Only seven members, the regular members can vote.
That's true, Jack. I didn't want to neglect Catherine and Bonnie.
I'm, I don't, I, I don't want to either. Just.
So since they're here, let's hear, let's hear what they have to say.
Am I not voting tonight?
No, you're not voting tonight. Seven regular members will vote tonight. Two alternates will.
But you could still comment, Catherine.
Yeah, you're allowed to partake in the application.
And Chris, I'd like to talk to you about that offline when, when we can as well, about the voting situation. I agree with what everyone else is saying. I disagree that a one-family home cannot work in this lot. I, I, I think if you look at the context of the blocks and the surrounding areas, yes, it might look smaller to some of the other apartment buildings, but I think in this immediate corner and the homes across the street, it does not fit in. I think the rooftop is unnecessary. But even without that, it really gives this sense of a, of an apartment building. I think it misses the mark on incorporating some of the, I don't think we should, I'm a fan of not replicating architecture from the past because we live in a new dimension, and we should represent that. I think that there are ways to do that. That's part of good design, is problem-solving, and nods to architecture that is there. So where, where it comes to height, mass, and certain elements, does it need to look Victorian, in my opinion? No. Should it look like Art Deco? No. I think that there are really beautiful, modern designs that are warm and can, can feel like they're part of the neighborhood. I just think that this overall just does not fit, does not fit on that corner. And I'm just looking at even just the, the rendering and in context of just the homes around it, although they might be multifamily, this almost looks like it can be a lot of units in this small building, and I just think it's out of scale. And for the record, I live in 1,000 square feet, 1,050. It's quite comfortable. Would be a little bit bigger. But usually complimented on how many people would like to downsize. So I do disagree with you on that, Mr. Segal. So I'm, I'm, I'm a no for this.
All right. Thank you very much. And I appreciate that you live in a smaller-sized space.
I'm probably the tiniest home in Asbury Park.
Okay. And, and last but not least, Bonnie, would you like to comment on this application? I don't want to neglect either one of you.
Yeah, I'll just be real quick. I know it's getting to be late. You know, a one-family, two-family, even though you can build a single-family, the, its highest and best use is certainly as a two-family, and I have no problem with the two-family. The, the biggest issue I have is, is the rooftop deck. It's not even the deck. It's, it looks like the stairs going up reminds me of a control tower at an airport. That, that's probably the biggest issue I have, and everybody said it, so I'm, I'm not going to beat a dead horse and, and say what everyone else has to say. But that would be my, that's the biggest hurdle for me, is that, is the stairwell going up and the height. Get rid of that. I think it would make the building look a lot smaller.
Thank you, Bonnie. All right. So at this point, all the comments had been made, and I guess, you know, we're coming to a point where we need a motion either for or against the application.
And for the record, Mr. Harris is back.
Yes. So do I have a motion either for or against the application?
Hold on. I, Donna's talking, but I have no idea what she's saying.
Donna is talking?
Yes. Are you talking to us or are you just?
Sorry, I'm talking to myself very loudly. Even my screen is telling me you're muted.
Okay, all right.
But just as a reminder, this, this does need five affirmative votes, so.
Yeah, I know that. Yeah, that, I got that. Okay. Five affirmative votes. Four out of seven is a majority, correct? It's not a use variance case?
It's a D. I think there's an FAR.
Oh, FAR? Okay, got it. Yes, okay, yeah.
So do I have a motion? Wow.
I'll make a motion that we decline the application.
Okay, hold on one second.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Two minutes.
I'll second.
Jill, you second?
I have a motion by Dan Harris and a second by Jill Potter. I will take role now.
Vote yes on this motion. It's to deny, not to approve. And if you vote to deny, I will assume it's based on the comments that you made just a few minutes ago. Unless you say something different. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Jack. Daniel Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brittany Ashman, how do you vote?
Yes. Based on the, the things I said, although I think the deposit criteria is there for the hardship, I just think it's, I, I think it's a detriment to the neighborhood.
So you're saying essentially that you don't think it met the negative criteria?
I feel like it met the positive, not the negative. Yes.
I get it.
Tim Slick, how do you vote?
I'm voting yes. And that is from my uneasiness with the design standards, but also what the other board members have brought up. You know, about the parking. And that's it.
Jill Potter, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Wendy Glassman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Russell Lewis, how do you vote?
This is almost over.
Yes. I vote yes for all the things that I mentioned before.
And Christopher Avaloni.
And unfortunately, I too have to vote yes to deny. I felt from the start that this was always kind of a 10-pound potato in a five-pound bag. It was just a little too much.
Okay, the yeses have it. That's a unanimous yes to deny the application, and I apologize for that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the time consideration everybody has given to hearings in this matter and the application. And we'll go back to the drawing board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Segal. Thank you, Mr. Karas. I'm sorry the way it has turned out, but.
Nope, not a problem. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a good night.
So I'll make a motion.
Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry. And then just before we adjourn, I just want to let everyone know that the next zoning board meeting on February 9th will be canceled.
February 9th?
Oh, I'm sorry. That is not the right date at all.
March 9th.
March 9th. Thank you.
March 9th is canceled because we have no applications outstanding, everybody. We're actually quite caught up.
It says March.
And what, what's the date for the following? It's the 22nd, 23rd?
It would be the 23rd.
The 23rd. Do we have applications on for that?
No, not, no applications right now for the 23rd either.
We don't have anything now, but there may be, but I highly doubt it. So that may be canceled as well.
Well, we have to, timeout. We have to adopt this resolution within 45 days, so we're going to have to have a meeting within 45 days to adopt the resolution of denial.
Okay, we understand, Jack. So whether we need a five-minute meeting, we'll have to do it.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I am traveling the la, the latter part of March. I don't know if the place I am staying is going to have internet or not. I, of course, will be happy to join in if I am able, but I just wanted to make that note.
We appreciate that, Russell. It, it, I don't think it's going to be a, a, a big problem because we only need a certain amount to approve a resolution, and right now we.
You know what? I can, if it's just a resolution vote, I'm sure I can, I'm sure I can call in, even if I don't have internet. I can, yeah, I can call in. Never mind.
Okay. All right. So there we go. I, I will now make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and have a good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Back, Arena. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone.